Say it again, Phil.
Double sided.
And bigger.
Rod, are you okay? So we're just looking for Jerry. Who is across the hall in Burke's office.
Listen, I know Rod is gonna rift and report a little bit, but what do we do?
We should make a point, but.
Yeah, right, right. That's right. Good philosophy in life.
Council President, we are ready to begin.
Yep.
Rod, ready? I would like to advise all those present that notice of this meeting has provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, and that notice was published in the city website. Copies were provided in the Bergen Record, El Especial, the Newark Star Ledger, Jersey Journal, and also placed on the bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. Written objections, if any, shall be made to the city clerk. If everyone can rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, we do roll call. Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabour. Councilman Prezisano.
Present.
Councilman Quintero.
Present.
Councilman Ramos. Councilman Russo.
Present.
Council President Doyle.
Present.
All present.
So we're gonna start this evening with a presentation from the Hoboken Middle School for the Steam Tank Challenge.
Good evening. Hello, can you guys hear me? Okay, sorry.
Can you raise that a little?
Thank you so much. Good evening. We'd like to send our heartfelt thanks to the city council, to Mr. Sorofin, and ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lorna Courtney Martinez, and I am a sixth and seventh and eighth grade special education teacher at Hoboken Middle School. We wanted to say this thank you for this opportunity you're sharing that you have allowed us to share with you. It is an honor. As my first year here as a middle school teacher after 21 years at Hoboken High School, myself and my co-teacher, Mr. Haranga, were approached by our math and science director, Ms. D., wondering if we would like to participate in a statewide science initiative called Steam Tank. And to be very honest, we jumped at the opportunity as our students have some really great ideas when it comes to creativity and ingenuity. The three students you see standing before you came up with this project that they believe will help to keep our beautiful waterfront and areas of our town we live in clean, subsequently sharing this concept across the globe. After submitting the proposal, the Steam Tank Committee reached back out notifying us we had been selected to move forward as a 2025 qualifier, which is a really big deal because this is the first time this has ever happened. Well, we just can't express and tell you how beyond proud we are of the hard work of these students that have put into this project all they've got. The STEAM team who put us in touch with a mentor met with us to bring our project to the next level, and one recommendation was to reach out to our city council members and just share our idea. Let the city know what we were doing, and let's all be on the same page as a community in a community that we all really love very much. So, thank you so much. I'm gonna introduce you to the three students. Here they are.
Good evening. My name is Zemir Krendel, and I am here with Zendaya Krendel and Jeffrey Concepcion, and we are the Famous Cleanup Crew.
We are here to present our invention, the FC Grabber. The concept of our invention is to collect all garbage, especially around our precious waterfront, and dispose ethically by using a large magnetic claw.
Pollution is one of the major problems in the world. Many animals and people are affected by the trash, rats, vermin that create within unsanitary conditions. Many of our wards. A majority of the pollution lacks touch care, and which leads to over littering affecting many of our wards.
To have this invention mass produced to use globally as well as to provide a product that will help our future generations. This product is to help sustain a clean and healthy planet for future generation to come.
We would really like to take this opportunity to say thank you all so very much for allowing us to share our presentation with the Hoboken City Council. With special thank you to Ms. Vanessa Falcone and Ms. Nora.
Dee Benedetto.
Dee Benedetto, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now there you go.
Our project is supposed to be around, like, we're trying to save all of our community and all the animals from getting polluted of their environment because everybody's littering in the world, and we have to stop it. So we don't have any more littering in this world because all the, because people are throwing trash and littering all in our waterfront, and all the animals are getting stuck inside of the water. And so we built them a hydration center, and we're supposed to stop everybody from having, throwing water inside the trash in our waterfront, especially the pier. And our city is supposed to be all around our country and our worlds. We're supposed to help everybody and stop the littering for our whole life because all the animals are getting stuck inside the trash with metals, cans, and plastic. And that's not right because it's hurting our environment and theirs. Thank you.
Designed this FC Grabber. It's the famous cleanup grabber, and we've reached out to Stevens, and we're in the process of meeting with our mentor in Stevens that will try to come up with a prototype so that we can share it. So we wanted to say thank you again so much for allowing us to do this, and we look forward to bringing more of these inventions to you guys. Have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Very much.
Jim, you do a picture?
Yep, come back. Thank you so much.
Cover your face.
Oh, let me do this.
Keep the sign lower.
Put the sign a little bit.
Lower the sign. There you go.
There you go.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Thank you, lovey. Let me come over here.
If the council will indulge me, we have three people from Stevens Student Government Association, and they just wanted to come up and give us a brief presentation. Michael Moschello and Alex and Sarah, are you?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Michael Moschello. I'm the Vice President Relations for the Stevens Student Government Association. This is Alex Stanzak, the President, and our Vice President Student Interests, Sebastian Sulzberg. We're here today to continue to reaffirm our commitment to the Stevens and the Hoboken community at large. Our government community relations chair, Sarah, that you mentioned, couldn't be here tonight, but we were here last semester continuing to reaffirm our commitment and wanted to share a few of our initiatives that we are doing right now and to continue to civically engage the Stevens student body in the Hoboken community. Our key initiatives that we've been working on include ensuring the student government representatives attend at least two city council meetings to keep an open line of communication between the student body and the city council to keep engaged. Hosting an Earth Day event between Stevens students and the Hoboken community in order to promote sustainability throughout the entire Hoboken city. In addition, organizing an emergency service appreciation luncheon to thank those who served to protect the community. In addition to our community efforts, we want to move civically, continue to invite city council members to campus for a city council member forum. I can see some familiar faces here that were on campus last semester, and we want to continue to invite you all to Stevens this semester. In addition, expanding our Duck for Democracy initiative, expanding voter turnout by over 10%, ensuring over 200 additional Stevens students are registered to vote in Hoboken, getting more voices heard. We've already seen this in practice with our NICSOL notification system seeing 50 student signups already, and that was pretty helpful these past two days. These initiatives ultimately reinforce our role as a civically engaged student body, and we want to continue to engage with the Hoboken community, with the Stevens government, and also continue to maintain engage with our civic student body. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could I have one? Sarah, we missed her. Yep?
Something they didn't mention, actually, on your list that's been a really big success locally, I know, is also the Society for Women in Engineering has been sponsoring outreach events. So this Saturday, there's actually an engineering challenge going on Saturday afternoon on campus. Students in grades six through 10 are welcome to attend. So I put it out there on social, but hopefully people are aware of that as well. So another great group.
It's such a great, great community.
Thank you for being such a good neighbor.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So Jerry, second readings? Well, okay, yeah, which, so for, thank you. We are pulling A1. Yep. CL7.
A1.
That, I think that's it. Okay. So, so could someone give me the sign up list that they've already done? So.
You mentioned that B733 is going back to first reading, first ordinance.
Yep. Yeah, as indicated on the agenda, B733 is going back to first readings, which is number one on the agenda stricken, so we're looking at 737. We have no speakers. Well, is it Mark Weller? Willis, you didn't indicate what you are interested in speaking on with regard to the ordinances. Do you have which?
I think public portion.
Well, okay, so you would like to speak in the public portion, not on an ordinance? Is that correct? Okay, so we'll make sure that your name is on there. So I'm gonna, right? No problem. All right, so. B737, Jerry?
Yep. An ordinance to amend and supplement an ordinance establishing a schedule of classifications and allocations of title for the herein mentioned positions in the city of Hoboken.
No members of the public? Any motion to close public portion? Any votes in favor? Council members? Mr. Farina? Mr. Laura, call the vote.
Councilman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabour.
Yes.
Councilman Prezisano.
Nay.
Councilman Quintero.
Aye.
Councilman Ramos.
Councilman Russo.
Aye.
And Council President Doyle.
Aye. So B738, do you want to read it before we have the speakers?
You got it. Amendment to Hoboken City Code, Chapter 138, outdoor dining to amend the specifications for parklets to require access to 100% of the area under or below the floorboards for daily cleaning to require quarterly compliance and requires setup during business hours.
Rosemary Markle.
Good evening. Tiffany, thank you for making me read this. Brought out some real doozies. The devil's in the detail, so I want to thank you for that, that you forced me to reread this, and it just turns out to be jumbled up mess of words that really don't do much for quality of life of the residents, but you may want people to think so. On letter D, the line was taken out that no new applications for parklets will be approved or considered. So that does not help anyone for the quality of life. So again, that's more for the restaurants, 25 restaurants, or the others that want to come along versus the 65,000 residents. On E, added access to the entire area for daily cleaning inspections through multiple means, hinge trap doors, which we already have and has been proven that you can't see all the way through, they can't be totally cleaned because beams are in the way. Open base with full visibility. Didn't we close up the bottom bases because that's how the rats were getting in? So don't understand why we want to go back to leaving that open, and no one can see from one end to the other. Other structural sound designs, wouldn't that be bases that are removable? That was on the last ordinance that was voted, the ordinance that was voted down. M1 and 2, only when customers are served, inspection will take place in cleaning and washing of the area. So you took out every day and made it eh, whenever. I guess they're on the honor system. They could serve people, we wouldn't know, and we don't have to clean. It's a very gray area, but I think that's what the point of this is. 3, power wash underneath platforms to flush out the rats, remove any standing water. Would love to see how that could be done with hinge trap doors, and we have beams in the way, so standing water is always going to be there. The only way is if platform is totally removable, like the ordinance that was voted down. For safety purposes, washing is not required if the temperature is 32 or less, or if no one is eating there. So no clearing, cleaning in winter months. That's wonderful. 6A, entire area at any time must be easily available via hinge trap doors. Again, we know that the trap doors don't work because the restaurant in question has six of them. I have pictures. It's disgusting under there. An open base is listed again. Seems like that removable platform would have been the way to go. You have that the health department will do inspections, and in H you list the parks and recreation and public works will do inspections around the parklets. All along, the council's been saying administration doesn't follow through. So who's going, is anyone really going to do these inspections? Are we just writing this down? And again, hoping it keeps the residents quiet. Again, if the restaurants were really good neighbors, they would turn them into seasonal streeteries, and no one can blame them for rats. Areas are easily accessible to clean, and residents have some parking back in their neighborhoods part of the year. This is a win-win for everyone. I understand that some don't feel the parking is essential, but for people who don't have parking garages, two more parking spaces on their block is a big deal. And in closing, I'd like to say, I understand this will never happen since residents really don't matter, and it's all about the restaurants and how much money they make and not about our quality of life. It's been proven time and time again by council administration. I would hope that she would go back to just remove the bases and make them streeteries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Markle. Enrique Herrera?
So this is in response to the whole, you know, the rat infestation and stuff like that, in terms of the outdoor dining and how we can clean that area. This being a modernized grid city structure, it will be easier for us to actually just time out when people finish, or at least businesses finish up at night, and sanitation comes in an appropriate time than just at random points in time. In regards to cleaning underneath any type of outdoor spacing or anything like that, it just becomes an easier option for, for anyone to just go for things like that first. That's where the most rats come from, especially the outdoor dining. That area in general is the most infested if it were anywhere else outside of the trash compactors and stuff like that. So the ordinance of, or at least to at least understand it better, this being a modern grid city, you should just have things correctly put on time. Because if, you know, time and time again that occurs, it's just because people are not correctly going to their spots. It's like if a police officer doesn't make their call on time. It doesn't, it's the same thing. It's a work environment, or at least the trash compactors, that is, it's a work environment that you have to be on point with what you're doing. I worked in janitorial fields in day spas and in other various locations outside of warehouse work when I was younger. And if you actually keep up, the upkeep does matter, and less rats in the city is a better option. But where do they come from exactly? Usually, the pass train is the big spot. That spot, and then there's the, the bridge that connects Jersey City to Upper Manhattan. I think there's, I don't really know the specific bridge, name escapes me. But those are the largest hubs of where rats come into Jersey City or West New York or Hoboken. And once that path opens up, how we deal with that is pretty much maintaining it with this modern grid city structure, like knowing what's going on, doing something about it, seeing the problem, preventative measures that could work in the favor of the city just to see it that way. Because it is an advancement in terms of, or at least as this, as this country went on about, you know, doing its business as a modern grid city structure, to keep the citizens safe is one thing, but the upkeep of keeping citizens safe is sanitation. So if we can just fix that problem in terms of upkeep, make sure that at the end of the day, the businesses are aware that if your trash is not wrapped up correctly, in New York, they did this, you will get fined. Making it a bigger problem for them isn't, isn't about the money. You just have to do your job correctly as a sanitation officer. You know, I think there was some sense of people walking by two or three times a week, and that does involve income. But just the basic sense of calling these, calling these discrepancies out would help. And if you see anything like that in terms of any employees just not, if anything, dragging your feet on any issue in any system like that, it's just an ode to like how employment needs to change in terms of picking things up. You know, lastly, just to be clear, just moving those things out the way and cleaning them, best option. Just make it simple. Makes it easier. Thank you.
Thank you. James Runkel? That's annoying.
Go back to the old clock, Jerry.
I don't like it. It's so loud.
Good evening, council members.
Sorry to distract you.
I didn't want this.
Not at all, not at all.
I remember making noise.
It's new. I'm just gonna see and go beep, beep. I'm just glad I'm not the only one hearing the beep.
Good evening, council members. As President of the Hoboken Business Lines, we are here to express our full support of ordinance B738. For our residents and visitors, Hoboken is a dining destination. 51% of our regional shoppers come here specifically for our vibrant food and beverage scene. In fact, 37% of respondents to our own community survey actually want more outdoor dining, which is a tribute to its popularity. For our restaurants, on the other hand, outdoor dining isn't just a popular amenity, it's a crucial revenue stream, helping them navigate the rising costs of doing business. It also provides a buffer against unexpected disruptions, which, you know, do happen, allowing owners to better plan and allocate resources. The HBA's work closely with elected officials to update this legislation, incorporating feedback from real businesses which will be affected. B738 offers increased flexibility for restaurants while maintaining a clean and safe environment for Hoboken's residents. By establishing clear guidelines, including compliance notices from city zoning and health officials, this ordinance makes it easier for businesses to understand and comply with requirements. This collaborative effort reflects a shared commitment to finding solutions that work for everyone, residents, businesses, and the city. And we at the HBA are very grateful for this partnership, and we're excited to see more of the dining experiences our community desires. We believe this ordinance is a positive step forward for Hoboken's business community and dining scene, and we're committed to work with the council and administration to develop resources that proactively support businesses to help in understanding and adhering to updated requirements and regulations. Thank you as always for your time, and especially for your partnership. We do greatly appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. That's it for public speakers? Motion?
No. I'm just kidding.
Alex, I'll put you on the list. I'm sorry.
Alex Garcia, 6th ward. The reason I asked and came over here is regarding the B738. I'm not sure if you guys even looked into this before, even though I support it because we have no solution at this point. Did you guys ever thought about turf? I mean, it would have been a lot easier. I mean, when I got turf back in our high school days, that was the best thing that came out. Easy to clean out, there's no rats, worry about picking up boards, sliding, whatever the case may be. It's a lot easier to pick up, there's streak lines that come through, and it's safer. Something you should have been thought about before this came through. That's one. Secondly, I mean, hopefully it doesn't go through, and you could bring this up as another resolution. Secondly, is myself and the majority, all of yous are pretty healthy to carry water. And I'm sorry, I'm bringing this up right now because I'm in a time situation. The fact that there's no Buffalo water tankers in the senior citizens building is a problem for me. I had to bring two five gallon waters to my mom's building so she could shower. The water's coming out black, I'm in dark brown. Boiling does not resolve that issue. Paul, you know we did that last year. Right now, on the third day, we should need to think about senior citizens. I could carry water, bring it to my house, my kids could take a shower, clean water. We need to bring those Buffalo water tankers to at least to our senior citizens who cannot carry water. This is unbelievable, you guys haven't thought about it yet. Think about it. Thank you very much. My apologies, Phil, but something to bring about.
Thank you very much, Alex.
Thank you. Have a good day.
I think this guy wants to. On this.
Yes, it's about the rats.
Sir, you're gonna have to wait until the.
I thought you had called my name on that paper, and I have checked it off.
And you said you signed up for the wrong thing.
No, but it was for the rats too as well, because I can relate to it as well.
But he, you, so you, so you would like to speak on the parklet ordinance?
Most definitely, if it's passed.
All right, thank you. So, and Mark, could you spell your last name?
W-I-L-L-I-S.
Willis?
Yeah, Mark with a K.
Thank you.
Yes. Do we have five minutes on that, please?
Sorry.
Yeah, gotcha. Thank you.
This is new.
No problem, and I love it too. I really appreciate it. I lived in Hoboken all my life, okay? And rats and Stevens, a whole lot of stuff I will speak about, it's a proposal and a business contract. I will try my best to put things together because we as a people gotta play a part too. We just can't ask you about the problems, but I have solutions, just like everybody have solutions. And my main solution is by the light rail. I seen over there, it's, I took pictures of it. It's terrible. The mountains where the rats all comes out, and a lot of other areas, but that's the main area, because I used to play on the mountains back in the days, Stevens, on the mountains when I was young. And the rats do come from there. In the summertime, they come down. In the wintertime, they come down in wintertime, they go up, they migrate, and they come back. However, my goal was to landscape, to scrape, clean, teach kids how to do landscaping, how to turn soil over to make it look different than what it's supposed to. I know construction, that we build things and we leave garbage fines, fines. We got to clean it up, or we have to wear it. We look bad because simple factors, no one don't fulfill everything. You start something, looks good, looks beautiful, but we don't complete one phase, two phase, stay on top of it. So jobs that should be in considerate, garbage cans, in areas that spray wash, whatever, before the fines come, that where I would propose on a lot of stuff that need to be in Hoboken, because I know every, every spot in Hoboken. in Hoboken, because I know every, ev- every spot in Hoboken pretty much that where garbage and the rats is a big plus here. And, um, now I'm at this phase right now that I can do something about it, but I will propose myself with a lot of paperwork besides just talking. I'm about action. So I'm not here to look good. I really don't like this here. I like to speak individually, however, and draw the picture up so that you can understand of the solution to the problem and make the best out of this situation for Hoboken and the younger generation. And I got something for the Stevens kids too. I, I talk about that something later on down the line about interacting. Um, uh, sports, whatever, all that stuff, I'm big on that. Community is separated. People looking at each other, I don't like it. I meet people, hey, how you doing? I was born that way. If I don't see something that says something's wrong. So I got solutions for that, God willing, on that path. But the garbage part, I will propose you with the proposal and the job, um, contracts that where I could provide people to support that, that not just to throw it on your table and just leave it there. Something gotta be done, you know? That's all I just wanna share. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. No more members of the public wish to speak on B 738? Motion to close?
Motion.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council members?
I mean, um, I'm gonna go first? Yeah. So just a few things. One, um, thi- this isn't the be all, end all for parklets. When we originally put the parklets, uh, ordinances, um, we voted on them to make them permanent. It happened very fast. It was very rushed. It was, uh, I think I voted against it, a few of us voted against it, um, because it just wasn't, it didn't really think about, um, kind of the future of Hoboken, but it served a really important purpose at the time, which was, um, all of our restaurants, A, all of our restaurants were really hurting during COVID and B, really our community just wanted to go out and be able to eat outside just from a health and safety standpoint. And I think, um, many people still wanna do that. I did a recent rat, or not a rat, A, I've done rat surveys, but I did a recent parklet survey to get some feedback. And really, there's only about twenty-five percent of our community wants to keep the parklets as is. Um, most people wanna see some sort of change. I think whether it's parking related, as, as Rose mentioned, that was the big, one of the, the bigger concerns. Um, the question is, you know, do we have a limit on how many we'll have in Hoboken? Should certain roads have them? We actually have spent some time, uh, uh, on our subcommittee, the North Subcommittee, which is a zoning, um, subcommittee, to start thinking about what a more permanent, um, parklet ordinance should look like. Two, a couple of people raised whether they should be just seasonal, whether we're pricing them correctly, um, whether they should rotate, whether they should be a fixed amount of time and only have a certain number in, in town, et cetera. That, that wasn't what, um, this exercise was. This exercise is in response to, we have a number of rat situations in, in Hoboken and one in particular up in my ward, we've had a number of my neighbors, I'm surprised they're not here tonight, um, coming to every single meeting and just very stressed that we are not doing enough to remove the food sources on our streets and we're not, right? And, uh, so in response to that, um, our colleagues, Councilman Russo and Ramos, put up a ordinance that, um, was, kind of started the conversation about making changes to parklets. I think we, where we got to with this was taking the spirit of what that was. I mean, these, these ordinances are all just about cleaning, they're nothing else. It's about trying to figure out a way to make sure we have daily access to be able to clean them. We have more accountability, more inspections, um, and we're holding the restaurants, we're, we're putting a better framework in place to make sure that the restaurants are doing their part, uh, to make sure underneath, um, is clean. So that's really what this meant to be. I'm appreciative of, um, you know, Mike and Ruben, or Councilman Ramos and Russo, started the conversation and put the first piece of legislation up. And I think what we tried to do is just get a little bit more input from our businesses, not all of the restaurants. Some of the restaurants take the cleaning a little more serious than others and have done a great job. And what this has meant to do is support those, um, but put some additional restrictions in place so we have more compliance from more of the, um, restaurants. So I'm hopeful everyone will be supportive tonight, but we will be coming back at some point. My guess is not for a couple of months, but we will be talking about a more, you know, some of the other features we just mentioned, like seasonality, et cetera, um, at a later date.
Sure. I'll go next, Council President. Thank you. So yeah, I'll just echo some of the sentiments Councilwoman Fisher, um, just went through. I appreciate, uh, the HBA continuing to advocate, uh, and be a voice in this conversation. Um, it's been very helpful to have your perspective on behalf of, um, several different stakeholders who are involved with your organization. For me, I think our outdoor dining program has been very successful. In addition to some of the statistics that, uh, James had shared earlier with respect to us being a destination and a differentiating, uh, feature for Hoboken, uh, as, you know, premier dining location, um, it's also an amenity for residents. And there are people who are still concerned about eating indoors. There's people who are concerned, not just for COVID reasons, um, but, you know, newborn babies and any other immune compromised, um, residents, I think appreciate the opportunity to also have the open air, uh, option available. Uh, and it does make it more possible, um, to get through the really difficult times. Um, this week has been very difficult on our small businesses, um, with the situation with the water supply, uh, a number of businesses have had to close unexpectedly. And so how do you smooth that out over the lifetime of your business to ensure that you can survive? Uh, and ensuring that we have a really vibrant set of businesses open is a benefit for all of us, uh, in a number of different ways. So, um, I'm very happy to have collaborated with Councilwoman Fisher on this. Um, I think a lot of what we learned out of the situation that you have had with your neighbors is the lack of coordination that was happening across the different agencies involved within City Hall. Um, so I think one of the benefits of this is really being specific about who the different entities are and which part of the process they are in, because there was some confusion. What was the Health Department's responsibility? What was sanitation's responsibility? What is zoning's responsibility? So I appreciate that this provides some clarity in that sense. And then I'm excited to see that, you know, there'll be conversations moving forward. Certainly the technology around this, as this has evolved over time, um, there's more available options in the universe, modular features that make it easier to continue with sanitation. Um, so I appreciate the collaboration that happened to get to this point. Thank you so much.
Councilman Russo?
Thank you, Council President. So I'm still a little concerned and don't understand how this ordinance will achieve the overall goal of cleanliness underneath the, the parklet itself. I, I, I think, as you heard from a member of the public, we changed the ordinance from its original to enclose the base. Now we're saying we're gonna open the base. We've talked about having trap doors. We allowed that for X amount of time. It didn't solve the problem. I don't understand where we are in achieving the overall goal. And even if you believe that this would achieve that goal, what is the timeframe that we're willing to wait if in fact it doesn't? So if we enact this here today and we wait three months and there is no change, are we making a change after that to the parklet? Are we going to potentially come back to the city council and say, well, maybe we'll just make the trap doors a little bit bigger? And then maybe even a little bit bigger than that, right? So my question is, how long are we gonna wait? And when and what metric do we have to let us know that it's actually happening?
How long are we gonna wait to?
Yeah, if, if it doesn't in fact work, how long are we, is the city council gonna wait before we enact something to change it? Because we, we've been waiting eighteen months.
Sure.
Right? Nineteen now.
You guys are so funny with your nineteen month references. We have had, we have had a rat issue across the city.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm speaking, but you.
But you're supposed to be positive. So you asked me a question.
I asked if it was nineteen months. It's simply a question, no question.
No, you didn't. You asked me how, that's not what you asked me. You asked me how long we would wait. And you know what? It could be, it could be a month, it could be two months. If it works, amazing, because what this ordinance does is literally it allows them to do exactly what you recommended. So if that is the way to solve for it and comply, it gets to do that. So if, if it's not working a month from now, we're gonna hear it. We have a couple, we have a couple of live experiences.
I respect your answer, but in your opinion, you think it allows them to do what I was trying to achieve in the legislation that I put forward? I don't believe that. I think it still becomes problematic. And my question is.
It says it allows it.
All right. So you timed the ones. Go ahead, Jim, you get yours out.
I, I just said, please don't interrupt.
Anybody else wanna get one in?
No, he said it to me.
Look, I did, I disagree with you, Councilwoman. And, and this is my time to make sure that the public knows that and make sure that you know that. Because the reality is that we've been waiting a long time. We still have the issue and I don't think this solves the problem. So I'm asking a question to see how long we're gonna wait? How long you're willing to wait? How long my colleagues are willing to wait? If it's three months, if it's six months, if it's a year, whatever that may be, I'm not willing to wait that long.
What are we measuring?
I'm willing now to make a change that's significant. That's it.
What, um, I guess what, when you say, how long are we willing to wait? What are, waiting for what? What are, what's the measure?
If in fact it doesn't work.
And how are you measuring it?
That's what I'm asking. That's exactly what I'm asking.
But in your, in yours, had we, had we voted yours, how would we have measured whether or not yours worked? How would, what, what is the measure? No rats anywhere in Hoboken?
No, the, the measure would be that the actual establishment would be cleaning daily and we had the ability to check that. It would be power washing weekly and had the ability to check that. And we had the ability to lift the entire platform so that we knew that it was clean underneath.
So we.
And I'm, and I'm asking you, how are you measuring yours?
So we have all of the, you and I had this conversation already. We have all of the same check provisions. We have the same goal, which is to be able to get underneath it and clean it. Your, your format to do that is to lift the floorboards. The format that is in here is allowing a wealth of opportunities to do that. You had a requirement to clean daily. We have a recommendation to clean daily. And from an enforcement standpoint, we don't have enforcement in City Hall that is going to enforce either one. They're going to go out and they're going to enforce and say, do we have the ability to get underneath and clean? And on a quarterly basis, they're gonna have to pass inspections. And if they don't pass inspections, they can't continue operations. That is something that you didn't have. You had just a random, we could show up whenever and see if they're cleaning daily, where we actually have put a structure in place that is workable for our Health Department to ensure on a quarterly basis, they go and they, they check, they lift them up and they will see if they're clean underneath. And if they are not, they will not be allowed to continue. So it's a, there's a, a positive, a small positive in yours that we didn't have and there's other positives in ours that you didn't have. And they basically get to the same thing, which is being able to access underneath the, the parklets, clean on a regular basis, but have a more regular inspection. And we, we, you, we've talked about this, we have a difference of opinion on, you know, whether or not yours is stronger. I don't believe, and, and the businesses didn't believe and nor did anyone hear, that it was practical to require that the very significant floorboards be structured in a way to be lifted every day. So, excuse me, going back to the, sorry, going back to the trap doors. The trap doors on some of these, the way they're structured, they, they're, they're, there's wider space in between the structural beams, some of them, the problematic one that is often raised are, um, have, uh, two beams and smaller trap doors that they've now cut a new trap door in every single one of them.
They made it bigger.
No, they didn't make it bigger. They just made more of them. So if you have, if you have like this, if you have like a stud wall that's laying flat, they now have, I don't even know, eight or nine trap doors that go all the way across in between the studs, that was their choice. But we, we have worked with the Health Department, um, Berlin Vilkant, who's kind of our, our unofficial rats are, you know, she is ready to go, day one to go out and inspect every single parklet and make sure that they are able to be open on a daily basis. That doesn't mean that you physically have to take two days to physically take your parklet apart. It has to be able to be lifted up, pulled off and, and able to be cleaned every day. And she is going to opine and give everyone a sign off on that and she's gonna check that on a quarterly basis. That is something new, that's something we don't have now. And just for everyone's benefit, we've not had any inspections of our parklets basically since they opened, because the inspections of this feature sat in a different department and they just weren't done. So now we've actually officially put them in the Health Department. We've officially worked with the Health Department to come up with a protocol to do that. And now we will actually have quarterly, uh, inspections. So we feel good about it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fisher.
So, so we still don't have a definitive date as to how long we're gonna.
My turn. Actually, Councilman Cohen is on the phone.
Oh, get him, make his tea.
Councilman Ramos, I don't know if you would like to speak, but Councilman Cohen?
Three months. There's your date, three months. We'll come back in three months.
I appreciate it, three month timeline.
Councilman Cohen?
What? Yeah, thank you, Captain President. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, uh, I think one of the answers to Councilman Russo's question is in section B, uh, of the ordinance, uh, 381D, which says, as of the effective date, any parklet not in compliance with chapter 138 must remedy noncompliant elements of the parklet within thirty days. As of the effect, within thirty days. If the violation is not remedied within thirty days, then the owner of the parklet must cease parklet operations immediately and remove the parklet from the public right of way until the structure meets the new requirements under the section of the code. So, you know, we don't necessarily have to fix the entire regime. If there's a problematic parklet that does not get into compliance within thirty days, they have to cease operation and remove it from the public right of way. And this, uh, this is, uh, you know, significant armor that comes with this in addition to what Councilwoman Fisher's saying with respect to a new inspection regime, uh, which, which will, you know, hopefully be robust as we expect it to be, uh, that, that this, this will be a major incentive for the parklets that aren't right to get right and to get right within thirty days, number one. Number two, I think it is, I, I wanna thank, uh, the Business Alliance and, uh, Mr. Runkel, uh, for working with, uh, the authors of this ordinance. Uh, I gave input on this ordinance. Uh, I think it's important that we balance public health with our businesses. Uh, and I think that this achieves that. I think that, you know, with all due respect to the, uh, ordinance that we did not pass at our last meeting, it was a one side fits all solution. And I think what this does is recognizes that, that street reeds come in different sizes and different shapes, but the goal is the same. Uh, we have, they have to be designed in a way so that they can be cleaned daily underneath the surfaces and completely cleaned underneath the surface. That's the goal. That's what we've tried to do and hopefully, uh, this will work because we want to have compliant businesses. If they can't keep their street reeds cleaned, then they can't keep street. That's the way this should be done. Thank you, Captain President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, uh.
You go.
So I, I have a couple of questions, um, that I don't think we thought about, that, one, we don't know when the last time the businesses actually fixed or updated their parklets. Some may have done, done this, I don't know, in the past month. I, it is the winter, I get it. However, what happens if suddenly and they comply and they spend, I don't know, throw a number, ten thousand dollars to do it? $10,000 to do it? And then suddenly we come back, six months later, change the ordinance, they have to spend another $10,000. So I just have a question on that standpoint. I really don't think fining them is the right way to do it. You just increase the price per square foot, that'll get the message right across. You get, if you're paying 225 or 250 or whatever it's up to now, you turn around, your first violation is $5 a square foot, and the third violation is $10 a square foot, I think your problems will be fixed and they'll be monitored from that standpoint. But I think ultimately, we need commitment from the administration, and I saw Caleb run out opportune time, but we need commitment from the administration that somebody is going to go out and inspect these, right? We don't even know when the last inspections were. I know that we're short-staffed in City Hall, and so I've kept some of my questions back because there's a backlog of questions. But I think ultimately, it comes down to, are we going to enforce this? We haven't enforced it over, I don't know, 18, 19, whatever months you're going to call it, we haven't enforced it. And up here, we're even fighting amongst ourselves. But at the end of the day, it comes down to, we can do all we want up here, I'm going to say it again, unless the administration enforces it, the executive branch does their job, we're blowing smoke. And we'll end with this, I sure hope you guys up here on this dais all spend enough time or more time that you're doing on this rat and parklet issue, that when we have the budget come up, I want to make sure you guys spend every ounce of energy you put into this when we talk about the budget that's going to be probably higher than we think. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman. Councilman Ramos?
Yeah, thank you. I don't want to repeat what was said by anyone, but I've had the pleasure of raising two teenagers that are now adults and now a current teenager. And you ever asked them to clean their room when they were teenagers, right? And what that process looks like when they clean their room, right? What do they do? They go around the edges of the bed, right, the edges of the window, and that's about it, right? Then you come into the room and you do the parent inspection, right? You go under the bed and you're like, oh, look at this, look all this dirt under the bed. Let's move the bed, right? We go to the corners, there's like a pile of clothes, you didn't move your clothes, let's move these clothes, let's clean under the clothes, let's clean this area here. This is similar. Unless you're moving things around to have total access of cleaning what's under the deck, we're not doing much cleaning at all. We're back to square one. And the whole thing of our ordinance is giving complete access to underneath the deckage. That's what the goal is. The goal was to keep it simple stupid. You want to do the best cleaning job as possible, and that's removing everything out, not opening up a trap door, I still have to bend over to look under the entire access point, get on all my hands and knees, no. Lift it up, move it off, clean it out, put it back. Maybe it didn't have to be daily, every day, but a couple of times a week to do that, power wash it once a week, it's giving total access. So I'm sure if you've had teenagers like I've had, you know, you give them the first time, right? Clean it their way, and then you make, you teach them to clean it your way, the right way. Moving everything around, get in your closet, organize your closet, put a couple of things up, no. You have to take everything out of your closet to fix your closet back up. That's what we were trying to do. Keep it simple stupid. This, like, we appreciate the more inspection points of it, but ultimately, even more inspections are just going to say more fines are going to be given. Do we want to hurt the businesses that we're trying to help by issuing more fines if they're not in compliance, instead of giving them the ultimate opportunity to be compliant with giving total access to cleanliness? That's what we're trying to do. And as far as like 18 months, 19, I've been talking about this for years, when skunks popped up in our neighborhoods, years ago. And this is just the evolution, the unfortunate evolution that happened when we knew we couldn't euthanize skunks, and they were protected species in the state of New Jersey, had to be captured and moved 20 miles away from where they were caught from. We haven't had that conversation since 2018, unfortunately. But here we are, and in a year from now, we'll probably be talking about this again, unfortunately, until we address it in its totality. And we want to remove the restaurants from the conversation totally, you know, by giving them total access to clean it, but unfortunately, as long as rats are in town, the restaurants are still going to be part of the conversation, unfortunately. So I appreciate the Council President the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Ramos, or excuse me, Quintero.
No, don't compliment me with that. You know, one day when I grow up. So, you know, I'm supporting this ordinance for all the reasons articulated by council members, Jabor, Fisher, Cohen. And, you know, the things that I like in particular about it and why I'm supporting this one over the one that was on a couple of weeks ago is, to paraphrase from Councilman Cohen, the balanced approach. This is a balanced approach to adding to the solutions that we've tried to put in place for the rat situation without being overkill. Councilman Ramos, you said, keep it simple stupid, which I agree, but that, keep it simple stupid, was at an enormous cost and burden to our businesses, in my opinion. Then with respect to accountability, this is adding two bits of accountability. One is on the administration. I think, I thank council members Jabor and Fisher for identifying the miscommunication within the administration. It seems like that is the main reason why inspections weren't occurring or weren't occurring as frequently as they have. Now that we've right-sized and will be putting it in the right place, I have full confidence in the health department being able to conduct their inspections. Also accountability with respect to the business owners. Now there's the clear expectation that they're not in compliance within 30 days and they have to cease operations. That's accountability. They're in the best position to mitigate this. But let's also go back in time and kind of remember, there's a lot of hyperbole that comes up here on both sides of the dais and in the audience, and it makes it seem that these parklets were the sole reason for all our parking challenges and our rat issues, and it's simply not true. About 15 years ago, I used to live on Washington Street, across from Louise and Jerry's. And I remember we had a really bad situation. Every time it rained really hard, we'd see rats everywhere. And I remember the skunks too. And I remember one time, I'm walking out of my apartment on the way to work, and my girlfriend had stayed over, and she walked out onto the sidewalk, and I was closing the door, and she had the smile on her face because clearly a kitten was kind of nuzzling up against her leg. And I was horrified and I was conflicted because at the same time, I wanted to jump and push this person who I loved out of the way, but at the same time, I didn't want to get near that rat, you know? This thing was huge, it was like Master Splinter. So this rat situation has been around for a really long time. Yeah, it got way worse around COVID, way worse, but not just here, everywhere. And guess what? This council put together a container garbage ordinance, which did a lot to help. There's still problems. Marine View's got big problems because of their situation with their management. We've got problem spots in the North End, right? But this idea that having this draconian fix that was proposed a couple of weeks ago was going to be a material thing that would kind of end the situation, it just, in my opinion, again, my opinion, it's just not true. I think if we got rid of every single parklet tomorrow, we'd still have some rats. Would it make it a little bit better? Probably, right? And so I am voting in favor of something that will continue to make it a little bit better without overburdening our businesses. Now, with respect to parking, I think, I think not all, some people just don't like parklets because they think parklets are ruining their parking situation. Again, if we got rid of every single parklet, it would add a microscopic amount of parking back into our supply. It wouldn't be material enough where anyone would really notice a fundamental difference. And not only that, you know, I hear a lot of folks, you know, often complaining about our taxes. Yeah, you know what, I'm going to be the money guy in this situation. These parklets bring in so much revenue, far more per spot than our permits, parking permits. So, you know, if you're pro lower taxes, then yeah, you know what, let's support more parklets. But we also got to find the balance here. So again, my two cents, and so I'm supporting this, and I hope everyone joins me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Can I just clarify one point, please? Thank you. Just want to clarify one point there, is that at no point in time did any of us say that this would stop the rat issue. The only thing we want, the goal was to remove the restaurants from the conversation to contributing to the rat issue with allowing total access to clean it. We did not say this was going to be the silver bullet to end the rat issue at any point in time that we say that. We just wanted to remove restaurants and rats from the same sentence. That was our goal. That was it.
Exactly. Council President, just quickly to add, we also didn't talk about removing parklets because there was a parking issue. We also didn't talk about, you know, a lot of the things, a lot of the points that were brought up in this conversation, I think those are all separate and apart from the conversation that we're having specifically about keeping them clean. You know, one of the problems we have here in Hoboken is that everybody wants to throw everything into one piece of legislation instead of tackling one problem at a time. And what we find more often than not is that we're paralyzed by that indecision. And we have to stop being paralyzed by the indecision. Pick one issue, make a decision, and move on. And I think talking about how we keep the parklets clean by doing one specific thing was attempting to do that. So I don't want the audience here or anybody watching at home to be confused by all the other issues that were brought up, in particular about parklets. None of those were ever discussed, and none of those were ever trying to be solved for in that discussion. So I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that.
Council President, if I can just clarify the clarification.
No, please. Mr. Lord, please call the vote.
Voting on B 738, Councilman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor?
Yes.
Councilman President Zano?
Aye.
Councilman Quintero?
Aye.
Councilman Ramos? Councilman Russo?
No.
Council President Doyle?
Aye.
Passes. B 739?
B 739, there are no members of the public signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, council?
I'll jump in. This is long overdue. This Director Franti and the Fire Marshal had approached us last year in our subcommittee in August. We had bounced this around numerous times, and I think Councilman Quintero and Councilwoman Fisher, when she was on the committee, we did a lot of research on this, and we know a lot more about e-batteries, I can tell you that much, down to what a cigarette lighter has. But I want to bring something to light that I don't think anybody really understands and that the merit of this legislation that we're putting forth. Not many people know that the fire at Shamborg was exacerbated by the fact, and I'm going to go on a limb and say pallets of hoverboard e-batteries contributed to that fire. And I think the fire chief or whatever can comment to that. And so I don't think people understand that these are very dangerous items. And the spirit of this legislation is to protect us in the common areas so that there's some accountability for things. And, you know, there was some pushback that we were including wheelchairs and things of that nature, however, wheelchairs fall under a special thing that they were not included. But ultimately, at the end of the day, this is just the first piece of the legislation. This is an issue that I've called some recycling companies, I've called the county to ask, what do we do and how do we recycle these things? And nobody has a great answer. There's a bunch of these recycling companies, however, when you call them, they don't want these things. So we have, I think, and you can buy these things on Amazon really cheap, and not UL-rated, UL-rated is about 20 to 40% higher in price because there is a little bit of more security or it's built better. However, if it gets hit, a bike falls to the ground, a hoverboard crashes into something, constant high temperatures, constant low temperatures, these things become unstable. And in some of the old buildings, that's a real big problem, not cement flooring buildings. You know, when a Tesla fire happens, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, my fire professionals, they have something called the turtle, and it's like 6,000 gallons a minute of water that they kind of just keep the electric vehicle from spreading, they kind of contain it until it burns itself out, not to mention the toxic fumes that come off. A normal sprinkler puts about anywhere between 24 and 40 gallons of water, so a candle fire could potentially be put out. This can't be put out with normal, how the buildings are built today. So this is the first version. And one of the things that made me really take a hard look at this was, Councilman Quintero is a big bike advocate. And so when I saw a bike advocate telling me that he was concerned, I kind of took a step back and I said, this is really a problem because it could hinder some decisions that people make, whether they buy micro mobility or not. But what scared me is when he started to talk about some things, that there is some issues that is concerning for him. And that's what made me take this more seriously because there's a lot of things that come up to us that we just vote yes on because it's the right thing to do, or, you know, it just doesn't matter what we believe in. But the fact that I had somebody that I looked to kind of for some guidance on this issue, and some other people that I trust that are bike advocates, had said to me, slow roll it a little. However, what scared me the most was when Councilman Quintero was like, we got to do this. We have to do this immediately. And in fact, I was the one, and I think you could say in the first meetings we had, I actually said, no, 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 we got to, we got to slow roll this, we can't just do this all at once. And I was kind of overruled. And again, I think this is the first step to bringing some safety, because if we have one fire in this town, it's one fire too much. I also want to give the tools to our fire professionals that they need, they're the ones that are trained the most. I don't care about consultants coming in here and telling me what's the right thing or not. When my fire professionals and my police professionals come up here and tell me they need something, I've got to stand behind them. So I'm really happy that this is, I hope all my colleagues will join me in voting yes for this, but I'm happy to see that we're taking a positive step towards safety in Hoboken.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Quintero?
Thank you, Council President. And just to correct the record, I am a bike advocate, but not as big a bike advocate as Councilwoman Jabor and Councilman Doyle for the bike Hoboken people. I don't need Nastograms coming at me. And look, I do like bikes and I like micro mobility, but I'm a, I like, I'm a bigger fan of not burning to death in a fire. So that is kind of the impetus behind this. And Councilman President Zano is right, I was advocating for a really strict approach in this instance because these things are dangerous. This is an example of technology that developed really quickly before we could understand the risks and put in the mitigation efforts. I'm a risk management professional for a living, so I, you know, make my living judging inherent risk and controls and seeing what's left, and what's left is whether it's acceptable. Based on the dangers associated with these things, I was willing to take that approach a couple of months ago, but there was significant feedback. So apparently, you know, there's members of the community who expressed that they were willing to take some more risk. So this new approach that we're taking now is identifying the riskiest things, the second-hand batteries, the batteries that are not registered or UL-listed that are less safe than those that are built to higher standards. And we're flat out saying that you basically can't use those in Hoboken. And then for those that are registered and are deemed safer, we're saying, look, you can't charge these things in common areas. And you can't, you can't, you know, charge them in hallways, can't charge them in basements. That's just best practice so that you're not putting your neighbors in danger. Because even the safest ones, if you use them as instructed with the cords that came with them in perfect temperatures, no extension cords, then they're safest. But not everyone does those best practices. You know, you have your cousin who, you know, loses the cord right away and then buys one on Alibaba, can't even buy one on Amazon, goes to Alibaba and buys one, right? And these things are terrible, right? And so we, this is not the end. We're going to look to see what other practices we can put into place to further mitigate those risks. And, you know, we're engaging the Fire Marshal, experts in the field, and including our bike advocates so that we can find a better solution to lower the risk as much as possible, even for those batteries that are deemed safer. So I thank Councilman President Zano for his work on this with me, and look forward to working more on it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cohen, I believe, could you?
Yes, I do, Captain President. I just want to thank Councilman Quintero for his leadership on this. I know that bike Hoboken initially had some concerns with the first iteration of this, and that they're fully supportive of this one. There was a lot of give and take, but I think everyone is on the same page, we all care about public safety. I also want to thank Councilman President Zano for working on this as well. Thanks, everyone, and I'm in full support.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Anyone else?
I'll just go quick. Can I go quick? Just a couple of quick things. One, the takeaway that I think people should take from this from a practical standpoint, if you live in any multifamily building and you see either an e-bike or scooter that is parked in your hallway and plugged into an outlet in the hallway, that's illegal now under this. And the whole reason is, imagine if there were a fire and that, either it caused a fire or a fire happened and it got to the e-bike or the scooter in the hallway and it blows up. These things are like incinerate and create a very fast explosion. These things are like incinerate and create a very fast explosion. If you're on the wrong side of it, A, you could die and B, you won't be able to get out. So think about every, every time you walk through your hallway and see something that's impeding you, that's the focus of this, is to have these not be plugged in, in your hallway. If you don't feel comfortable telling the management, you don't feel comfortable telling your neighbor, the easiest thing you can do is just call 2014-202100 and the police will come and probably just give a warning the first time. But that's really the main takeaway. You know, all, the only other thing I'll say, and, and Councilman Quintero mentioned this, is, you know, this, there was a lot of urgency around it. It's something that's been very important to our Fire Marshal. And when we put the first draft, I was still on the public safety at the time, it just, it wasn't perfect. We put it up, it wasn't perfect. And the feedback that we got from the community about how it wasn't perfect, it didn't really make sense. It was too, was really limiting our ability to have mobility in Hoboken. We were able to get it crafted in a way that it made sense and supported responsible users with high-quality vehicles while at the same time providing these great protections in some of the areas of greater concern. So I'm glad to see, I wasn't, I didn't take it to finish, but I'm happy to see that you guys got it there and were voting on it tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Lord, call the vote.
On B 739, Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor.
Yes.
Councilman President Zano.
Aye.
Councilman Quintero.
Aye.
Councilman Ramos.
Aye.
Councilman Russo.
Aye.
Council President Doyle.
Aye.
B 740 is carried to the next meeting. The planning board has not yet conducted its consistency review, which will happen on February 27th, I understand. So we're on to public portion, agenda items, resolutions. You guys are tag teaming?
Yes, we are, we are tagged.
Okay, Elaine Thomas as well.
Yes, so I'm going to go first. I'm Elaine Ellis-Thomas, Rector of All Saints Episcopal Parish at 7th and Washington. I'm here on behalf, along with Catherine Williams, on behalf of the Hoboken Pride Advisory Committee, which was established, as you know, by an executive order over a year ago. And last April, we had our first meeting. And by June, we were ready to roll out a whole month of events and programs for Pride Month. I commend you all on the ones that you appointed and approved to this group. It just shows what a group of dedicated people can do. And we've had other events and gotten together to discuss ways to advocate for the LGBTQ+ community in Hoboken and in Hudson County. I want to thank you all and the mayor and the administration for your support of this, especially now when LGBTQ rights are being curtailed. Danger to those in our community, particularly transgender folk, is, is of great concern. So the more vocal you are, the more supportive you are, the more the world's going to hear that because not everyone believes that everyone is part of the human family and deserves to be part of that family as, no matter who they love or how they identify. So I want to thank you for that and I'm going to turn it over to Kathy for her part.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Williams. I'm Chair of the Pride Advisory Committee. I want to thank you for acting so quickly to fill up our committee and appoint new members. I do hope that you'll read the report that I circulated by email today. You'll see that we were very busy last year and we look forward to being even busier in the year to come. And as Reverend Thomas mentioned, you know, it's no secret that the federal government is doing it all it can right now to pretend that transgender and non-binary people don't exist. And in the listening events we've held in the first part of this year, the concerns we've heard are from parents in Hoboken who are really worried about their kids. They're worried about whether their kids are going to continue to be safe and included in Hoboken schools and elsewhere in the community. And I hope that if these concerns come to you from any direction, you will partner with us and see us as a resource to help address them. We would really welcome conversation with you. And I hope you'll continue to see it as a, really a matter of safety for our community and, and be able to address it with the consensus that, that we just saw with the battery resolution. So I really appreciate your continued support of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rose Marie Markle. And Rose, I believe you've signed up for?
Just four.
Four, so she gets a little?
Just four, no, not all of them. Wasn't that bad this month? Shocking. Okay, A4. It's a resolution awarding a contract for an engineer for private property. Since two separate landlords have two different engineer reports, why is the city paying for this engineer? Shouldn't the landlords pay for this? And if not, we have a city engineer on payroll, why aren't they doing it? Just boggles my mind. That's a little bit of fiscal responsibility here. CD6. How much can or will this cost taxpayers since item CD7 is already costing $12,500? Clerk, item number three, in the backup of the acquisition says $17,500, but now we're approving $29,000. Why the $12,000 increase? Like, that's a big jump. T1, a contract for curb manager software with absolutely no information in the background. Everything is left blank, no disclosure documents, nothing. Isn't this what we were paying Kimberly Horn for? I'm really confused. I mean, how many companies do we need to hire to eliminate parking? Imagine that, I'm done.
You didn't sign up to tell me what, it's resolutions, any resolutions.
Great, totally awesome. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Thank you.
You're up.
Okay. Trying to be nice about it, trying to find the right words to select. I can't say we do need you, but if you don't know, I have people, I contract whatever, with you or without you. I can get contracted to clean this place, whatever. But what I'm trying to say is that dealing with the kids and everything with the Stevens, I'm a motivator. I love motivating kids. I love motivating people. That's what I do. I find solutions. I don't find problems. I see it and I go get it. Why? Because my intention is to make a change. And I don't believe in simpleness, you know, because life is not simple to me. It's always chaos. I live in chaos. I love chaos because I understand chaos. But I know what part I got to play now. Before I didn't understand it. Now I'm living proof. So I'm only here to help the Stevens kids out with the community so they can interact in a whole lot of different, ever, you know, sports, intellectual challenge, you know. So I'm going to do my part, with you or without you. I'm cool with that. But I will talk to them and I will talk to the kids. I have a blow on it. I get a blow on it. I'll do that. But my intention is to bring people together on the crisis we live in because I remember the crisis that where we had welfare cheese. But I was too young to understand it. But these kids don't understand it. Did anybody explain to them what we went through? I don't think so. They don't understand a struggle, holes in sneakers, something wearing, they don't notice stuff here. And a lot of the adults act like they lose their mind just as worse than the kids. It's insane what we are going through. So I had to step back and I had to look at the role that I used to play. Someone got to explain it to them. So I'm going to play my part regardless, with you or without you. But I do need your help, I do need your support. But if you're not there, I'm cool with that too. Because I'm, I'm with God regardless. So I'm always going to find a way regardless. I made it this far, it's a lot more work for me to do, so I just wanted to begin. So if you can, you know, keep an ear out, you know, I will have a proposal if you want to participate. If not, I'll go the other way. Contracts that dealing with other stuff need to be brought to attention, churches. Well, I'm going to find something. You know what I mean? But I just want to let you know, I still got two minutes, 28 minutes. You know what I mean? Am I speaking right on that part? I'm just letting you know because I'm seeing you trying to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure, not being sarcastic, just want to make sure that you understand that I'm here. I didn't speak to you all the other time, I was just being very humble about the situation.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I just wanted you to know that we are coming, you know, kids, everything, all different nationality. So we're going to not take away from the future, so I'm going to make sure they fulfill that.
Okay. Thank you. Alex Garcia?
He's departed.
That's it for members of the public? Motion closed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Third.
Consent agenda.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto the consent agenda. What was it? A4.
A4, CD7.
You know CL7 is, is bold.
Right.
Carried. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Farino. I'm sorry, Mr. Lord.
Consent agenda.
Everything other than A4?
A1 is off, right?
Yep.
A1 is off. CD7, CL6, P4, and as noted, CL7 is off for the evening.
Okay, Councilman Cohen, consent agenda.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor.
Yes.
Councilman President Zano.
Aye.
Councilman Quintero.
Aye.
Councilman Ramos.
Aye.
Councilman Russo.
Aye.
Council President Doyle.
Aye.
Are you going to go through? Nothing. Yep, okay. No, I'm talking to Jerry. All right, A4?
Yeah, is, I think Rose had a, Rose had the right question, which is, why are we doing this?
The city doesn't have a structural engineer on staff. Our engineering staff is not trained in that. There's a dispute between two property owners as to relates to the structural integrity of their adjoining wall and who is responsible for it. The construction office has been out there a number of times and they would like to have a structural engineer assess who's responsible for the wall that shares the two properties.
And, and that's going to inform some action that we're going to take?
Correct.
Like potentially we're going to take the property down?
Or who would be responsible for doing what to what wall? Making a determination from our construction code official.
They're competing engineering reports that point the fingers at each other and we need a third party to?
Right, but so basically, the city has to, the city has to make a decision, so irrespective of if they have two competing reports, the city has to make a decision and we don't feel as though we have either someone in-house or a report that we can rely on. Is that a fair?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's just that the city has to, it's our, we're making some sort of decision that we have to, so I guess it's okay.
Be able to rely on.
Yeah.
Council President, could, could you, Director, could you get a little bit more in the weeds on that? What would this, this decision be? Like, what, what are we trying to achieve? Do you, do you have that information or is it?
My understanding is that there's a portion of one of the structures, I'm not sure which one, that was deemed unsafe. It's basically determining who is responsible to remediate the unsafe structure.
Right, so why can't the city issue the same violation to both and let them deal with it so that we don't have incurred an expense of $7,600?
So we are bound by the Uniform Construction Code of the state. We're required to make a determination on this. I think issuing two sums for the same thing is not effective, it's not going to change the outcome of what's going to happen in terms of who's responsible for handling the issue at hand.
So is it that the construction office has no clear determination or are they just trying to validate what they already?
No, they, they do not have a clear determination. This is a third party to bring in an expert to determine what the, what the issue is.
Okay.
I don't know. Yeah.
Director Freeman, if two people are arguing, are they going to pick up the $7,600?
No.
Or is there, are we, but are we, how are we caught to pick up the $7,600?
Because ultimately, it's a determination that needs to be made by the construction code official based on the Uniform Construction Code of the state. So that's our responsibility based on what's going to happen. I believe at least one of the properties, at least were temporarily have been displaced. Like, it is, it's been an ongoing issue at these two addresses now for several months.
Unfunded mandate. Mr. Lord, call the vote.
Voting on A4, resolution awarding contract to Flex Engineering Group, an amount of $7,600. Councilman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Councilman President Zano.
Did you break the wall, Emily?
Reluctant, aye.
I know too much.
Councilman Quintero.
Aye.
Councilman Ramos.
Aye.
Councilman Russo.
No.
Council President Doyle.
Aye.
Passes. Two, three, four, five, six.
Okay. CD7.
So can you?
CD7, not CL7.
Can you explain why we need to do this?
Sure, so probably a year or so ago, maybe a little more, the city acquired the properties at 207, 209 Jefferson Street, which are adjacent to Hoboken's firehouse, fire headquarters. That building, our building, is in desperate need of rehabilitation, has been for a number of years. I think some of you toured the basement, it is concerning and a bit scary down there that I'm sure Chief Peskins can attest to. So we are beginning the process of assessing what our options are for that property. We have not had, I think we bought 207, 209 for about $3 million. We have not had the prop, the, the three properties of three addresses assessed as one property to kind of understand what we're working with. The, the fire headquarters is historic structure, which adds a level of complexity to it. There's also the adjacent parking lot or quasi-parking lot that the firefighters use. So we're essentially assessing kind of what the value of those three properties are as one property to determine what the best course of action is for the city to take as it relates to maximizing the efficiencies of our firehouses.
Council President?
So that, wait, sorry, so that, I still don't understand why you need to do an appraisal of it. We paid, we bought these properties a year ago under a shroud of secrecy, which we've talked about.
I know, some of them we are.
Two, no, we own one, but we bought 207 and 209. We had to fight to get them to tell us what it was, right, till the very end. We finally were told that we were buying them to, you know, we were told we had to be quiet about it because it was an off-market deal and we were buying it to have additional land so that we can redo the firehouse. We paid 3.2 million to a family that acquired it six months earlier for 3 million. And so we know what the value of those two properties are. We have a $3 million one a year ago, a 3.2 million. We're talking about our historic firehouse. I don't understand why we need to do an appraisal of this. What we need to do is an assessment of what we want to do for our fire department on this site. And I'm, there's a lot of questions around this, around the people that owned it previously, donations they're making to certain council members, like this is, everything about this is very fishy and I don't think we should be doing any appraisal before we first decide what we actually want to do with this fire department. We own, we bought it, we were told at the, the reason we approved it, the reason given it to us at the time to spend $3 million on two residential properties was specifically to consider expanding the firehouse. So to me, we should consider expanding the firehouse and what we need and decide if it can be accommodated there and we shouldn't, we shouldn't be voting on this at all. I will be a no.
Council President?
Councilman Russo?
And I never want to put words in Councilwoman Fisher's mouth, but I think the question really is just a simple one. Do we have an intention to sell off this property? Is that, is that why we're appraising it? Or do we have a reason to borrow against the property? What is the reason for the appraisal?
The reason is...
That's really what we, what we as a council would want to know.
Sure, no, understood. I, I think the, the overall reason is to understand what we're dealing with, right? Again, the, the largest part of this property has not been appraised and we do not know the value of it, is on a corner, it's a corner lot now adjacent with two, two adjacent residential properties that are now in the city's possession. We want to understand what we're dealing with. I, I'm unaware of what it's shady about trying to get an appraisal on a, on a piece of property that the city owns, but, um, the reality is, we try to leverage in any way, shape, or form we can, what we're doing, right? Their city owned a piece of property, we just got it appraised and we are going to work with HUD to have them acquire that property for, uh, the Housing Authority redevelopment. That appraisal came in far higher than we initially anticipated. So getting an understanding of what the real value is, the present-day value of these properties, is something that I think is valuable to all of us to understand what we need to do moving forward, or what we can do moving forward.
Okay, understood, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Council President, I'll just add, I think I think Councilwoman Fisher is not wrong to raise the question with respect to what the plan is to do with this information. And I'll just add that, you know, from my perspective, one of the conversations that we have had is the need for the city to invest in a new public safety complex. And so, if that's the intention, I would like somebody to say that and to understand that that's the purpose of this appraisal. If there's another purpose, you know, I understand you're looking at all the options, but I would like to see that prioritized in the universe and I'm not really sure why this would be the focus as opposed to some of the other opportunities we also have. So it'd be helpful at some point to understand where this fits in terms of that larger landscape of how we're looking at the properties that we do have available to us for, I'm very specifically interested in a new public safety complex, but understand there are other discussions as well.
Sure, I, I, I completely understand that and I think we've made it pretty clear we have interest in building a new public safety complex, plus, 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 that wasn't well-received by the city council and we're going back to the drawing board to figure out what that looks like. There's absolutely a need, you can talk to both our chiefs about the need for a public safety complex, what exactly that looks like, and if that's the best location for it, I don't know the answer to that, right? So getting an idea of understanding what we can leverage in terms of property that we own, that can be better used by someone else and we can leverage other property elsewhere. I'm not saying we're looking to sell it, but the idea that we have property is not something that comes across, that comes across our desk that often, and understanding what we're dealing with is important.
So to, to glom onto what Councilman Russo initiated at the beginning, underst- understanding the value here is just to be able to evaluate options of selling this versus building there, because I don't really get if we are committed to building a facility there, expanding the existing, or however you want to describe it, why would we need to know what the property is worth? You know, it's, if we're on the waterfront, I might understand that we could get much more for a sale and then build a facility with that money and have a surplus of sorts, but...
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's just the, the options, right? Understanding what those options are and, and the council's not ever, not always privy to what is happening, uh, upstairs. So is it gonna be a land swap with somebody? Are we looking to maybe use a different site for the public safety, um, needs? And then this site becomes something else like housing? Who knows, right? But I think understanding the option is what the entire council would probably want to know.
So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say the shadiness. One of the council members was overheard arguing with the prior owner of this, the one that bought it for 3 million, and the prior owner was, has an expectation of developing this site. And I, I just think everything about this is shady. We should not be doing an appraisal, we should be understanding what the needs are of our community, we should not be thinking about special interests, land swaps, don't give a, I don't care at all. This, this was sold to us as we are expanding or fixing, re, redeveloping, um, our firehouse there, and we should have that conversation first. We don't need to have alternative uses for this site until we have a better understanding of what our own needs are. And I, I could not be more frustrated that this is even on air. As a matter of fact, I will make a motion to table this if anyone wants to second it. I just think we either table it or just we vote it down. All right, no one wants to?
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Councilman Ramos, second it, okay? Call a vote?
Whatever, whoever wants.
No.
Well, we, we have a motion, so...
So we just call a vote now?
Call a vote. Call a vote. Calling vote to table resolution C D seven? Or is it six?
C, C D seven, that's correct.
Seven, right? Okay, Councilman Cohen?
No.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor?
Yes.
Councilman Prezzano?
Aye.
Councilman Quintero?
No.
Councilman Ramos?
Aye.
Councilman Russo?
Aye.
Council President Doyle?
Doesn't matter, aye.
Okay, it's been tabled, C D seven. Now C L six.
This is me too, sorry. I, um... This isn't personal, I know she's sitting in the audience at all and I appreciate all of her advocacy when she comes up and speaks passionately, um, on this topic. You know, we're, we're still trying to figure out what the role is of the Cannabis Review Board, but what I'm concerned about with this candidate is she's just, um, she works in the cannabis industry, uh, makes money generally off the cannabis industry, and I just feel like that is the kind of conflict of interest that we typically try not to, uh, the, the appearance of a conflict of interest, we typically try not to have on our municipal boards. So I'm gonna be a no on this for that reason, not because of her advocacy or anything. I just think we should have, um, and, and I'm okay with people that are pro-cannabis or whatever, but aren't necessarily working in that industry. So that's, I just wanted to raise it and say that's why I'm gonna be a no tonight.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Lor, C L six, call the vote.
Councilman Cohen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher?
No.
Councilwoman Jabor?
Yes.
Councilman Prezzano?
Abstain.
Councilman Quintero?
Aye.
Councilman Ramos?
Abstain.
Councilman Russo?
Aye.
Council President Doyle?
Aye.
Passes.
P four?
So, it's, it, it's, uh... I, the reason why I raised it is I love the idea of having instructional tennis. However, this literally takes Monday through Friday, 4:30 to 7:30 for, from April till June, for 100% instructional tennis and 0% recreational tennis. And it feels like it's a time slot that people, like after work, might want to just go drop in. We, we have plenty of tennis players and, and I am just concerned about that and whether or not we should consider like a different set of times so that, like adults or whoever, kids, teenagers after school can come and, and just play recreationally. It just, it seemed like it was too much of a commitment taking away from, uh, the public's use.
Council President?
Yeah.
So, just my experience, my children actually have participated in the program. It's, um, they typically only use two of the courts. So they have the third court that they leave open for members of the public to use, certainly understanding that there's a large demand. But I've noticed that, you know, people are generally pretty accommodating, I think, of the kids' programs and it's been very successful, it's very in-demand, it fills up within minutes every, every season that it's offered. So just to present, you know, a different perspective, I think, um, it's certainly something that is to the benefit of the community in that sense. We need more tennis courts, obviously.
We do.
We need more facilities, is the bottom line of, of, of the takeaway there. But I do know that they are generally, try to be respectful about, like consolidating their activity space to allow people, um, the opportunity to come and use this.
Can we restrict it to them? Because, like, the Stevens Courts are out of commission right now, so we don't even have access to half of the Stevens Courts. Could we make it that they, if, if they only use two, to just say they would only use two and not three? I know it's in, you know, this is, this is the...
It's not specified in the, um, in the language of the resolution, but I just know that by capacity, they tend to only use, and sometimes only one court because the older kids' classes are even smaller because they
Right.
kind of need more space to play, so...
It's the challenge that we're always faced with, right? Which is, we, the demand for our public space exceeds the supply of it by like 10, right? Or a multiple of 10?
Just to be, just to be clear, this, we're, we're applying to the county for a permit that the county can grant. So us saying who can use the courts or what, it's, like, the county can give a permit to somebody else and we're locked out.
No, they'll give them...
We're securing space for...
They'll get it to us if, yeah. I mean, they, they're pretty deferential to the city for things like this. I mean, it, that, that was just, listen, I'm not, I'm not trying to...
Do we know if it's, if it's eight weeks or 12 weeks?
April 21st to June 16th, 4:30 to 7:30.
It's April to June.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Well, it's the middle of April to early June, which is not three months. I, I, you know, I'm just trying to
Yep.
The scope of what we're talking about here.
Okay, that was it.
Two months.
Councilman, did you?
No, 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 we've talked it out.
All right, um, Mr. Lor, call a vote?
You got it.
P four?
P four, Councilman Cohen?
Aye.
He said yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor?
Yes.
Councilman Prezzano?
Aye.
Councilman Quintero?
Aye.
Councilman Ramos? Councilman Russo?
Aye.
Council President Doyle?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinances for first reading.
Okay, all right, uh, want me to read it?
Yep.
Okay. Number one, ordinance amending chapter 190 dash 71 entitled, "Missspily Managed Electric Vehicle Charging to Add Volt to Charging Stations to Garden Street."
You're okay with that?
Uh, Mr. Lor, call the vote?
Councilman Cohen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor?
Yes.
Councilman Prezzano?
Aye.
Councilman Quintero?
Aye.
Councilman Ramos?
Aye.
Councilman Russo?
Aye.
Council President Doyle?
Aye.
Do you want me to read these, or do you?
Thank you. Ordinance number two, ordinance amending chapter 192, Parking for Persons with Disabilities.
Mr. Lor, call the vote?
Councilman Cohen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor?
Yes.
Councilman Prezzano?
Aye.
Councilman Quintero?
Aye.
Councilman Ramos?
Aye.
Councilman Russo?
Aye.
Council President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinance number three, ordinance to amend chapter 190 dash 11 entitled, "Loading Zones, Designated to Add Loading Zones to Newark Street Between Hudson Street and Washington Street, Garden Street Between Third and Second Street, and River Street Between Hudson Place and Newark Street."
Mr. Lor, call the vote?
Councilman Cohen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor?
Yes.
Councilman Prezzano?
Aye.
Councilman Quintero?
Aye.
Councilman Ramos? Councilman Russo?
Aye.
Council President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinance number four, ordinance of the City of Hoboken, amending Hoboken City Code, chapter 190, Vehicles and Traffic to Men, Viola, Public Safety, and EMT Parking.
Mr. Lor, call the vote?
Councilman Cohen?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor?
Yes.
Councilman Prezzano?
Aye.
Councilman Quintero?
Aye.
Councilman Ramos? Councilman Russo?
Aye.
Council President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinance number five, ordinance of the City of Hoboken, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving the Garage B Municipal Garage Redevelopment Plan.
Council President, point of order. Just a, just a question, I spent some time looking at this and then I saw an amendment or something come in today with a bunch of changes. Do we know if there is like a bunch of changes? Do we have any idea?
There...
I, I didn't get a chance to look at it because it came in too late.
Pardon? It was the wrong thing on there, right?
It was the wrong thing on there?
Yeah, I, I talked to Director Brown and there is, uh, I think at the, wow, again, I'm, this is what I, I alerted him that on the actual ordinance, at the bottom it had, designated plan was Fabian Arts Center. So I asked, I told Director Brown, and then Director Brown looked at this and some of the links actually didn't line up as well, and he said, okay, I gotta take care of it. So I'm assuming that that's what had happened. I don't know, but you could maybe...
Well, maybe Director Brown, I guess...
Director Brown should let us know.
I will say, as he comes up, that I reviewed this and had suggested comments with, that Director Brown considered.
This is the version we got at 5 o'clock, is that right?
I don't know whether the Fabian situation, I don't know anything about that.
That was...
So...
That was when we called on the weekend.
Yeah, um, so, Council President Doyle had a number of amendments or edits to make to the document, uh, and we made all of those edits and amendments as you proposed, many of the amendments and edits that you, that you proposed.
I would say that there was, this was not substantive changes to it.
You missed a comma here and there?
There were some commas.
There were some, there were some those that needs to be this, there were, you know, commas that needed to be added, periods that needed to be taken away, yeah. And there, and there were some substantive comments that we discussed and, um, yeah, and it, it, it was, it ended up, I think, making the document better as always, and we appreciate your, your, your eye.
Right, I'm not looking for compliments, but no, I do think...
We want to give them to you, Council President!
For, you know, it, if you had reviewed it prior to today, you, there are changes. So, you have two weeks to look at it thoroughly, or you could, we can carry it and...
We get this redlined?
Yeah.
No, so the version we got was not redlined.
Yeah, not redlined, it's like, it's like...
I can send you my comments, but I can't, they weren't all incorporated, so...
Do we need, do we need to vote on it tonight, or can we just, can we vote, can we carry it to the next meeting? Is there a rush or anything, other than?
It, it's, it's, it's the, it's the...
Other than people all over the country aren't housed?
Yeah, no. I think we're fine carrying this for a couple of weeks as the sponsors, so I don't have a problem with that to make sure we can see a redlined version.
Great, that would be awesome.[1577.52] Great. That would be awesome. And then if we can just get a redlined version, that would be. Yeah. Do you have a red, the ability, or send the two, if you send the two, we, we can do it. There's a way to do that, yeah. Yeah.
Compare doc.
We can do a compare doc.
We, I can, I can share with you all, um, Council President's comments and edits. I can then share the Word document that we made to address Council President's edits, and you of course have the document that's in your package.
I think we just want to see the difference between the old document and the new document. We don't need to see Councilman Doyle's.
If you can't. Can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Council President, could I just make a suggestion? I mean, it's on the agenda and, and if everybody is okay with any of those amendments, we do lose two weeks, right? So I would just say vote for the first reading of this, and then if we need to change it, we just change it and it becomes first reading again two weeks from now and then move from there. But that's just my, my two cents on the whole thing. But.
If I may ask, you, uh, Councilman Prezano was indicating something about different changes.
Yeah. So I think what, what happened was we, there was an Acela item, it's an Acela issue. There was an item on Acela that was from an earlier iteration, and I think that when the agenda was posted, it linked to that item instead of the item that we had posted last week. So it's just, it's an internal Acela issue. That's, and I appreciate you, you flagging that. Thank you.
You gotta read things before you vote on them.
Of course.
Especially something that's.
I thought you wanted it in hard copy, too. I remember this.
And I do, I, the version that I read when I was inputting my comments to make your life easier into a Word version, I realized there had been updates. You know, there were some things that were just chronologically modified. So I, I, I leave it to, to you all. Is there a?
I'm fine voting on it.
Motion to carry.
I'm fine with carrying it.
I'm okay with voting on it.
Okay, so this, we have a motion to carry, is, and I believe, did you second or?
Sure, I'll second it. That's fine.
All right.
Okay. Uh, voting on and motion to carry ordinance number five regarding the Garage B Municipal Garage Redevelopment Plan. Councilman Cohen.
The motion to carry?
Yes.
No.
Councilwoman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor.
Yes.
Councilman Prezano.
Aye.
Councilman Quintero.
Aye.
Councilman Ramos. Councilman Russo.
No.
Council President Doyle.
Aye.
Okay, it's been carried.
Okay. So, uh, we have.
Heavy's the head, Council President.
There's a, oh, so there's no resolution to send it to the planning board? Thank you. So public portion, the true public portion. Enrique Herrera.
With an, uh, with an, uh, understanding about your experience with risk management, this is just, I, I have a, um, a copy, oh, is it already starting? Yeah, yeah, of course. So that would be more or less inclined to be given to Cohen, right? Am I right? Oh, okay, so. Yeah, oh, no, I feel you. I understand. Well, I really, what I really am really bringing up is again.
I'm a married spirit. I'm a married spirit.
Well, with your experience in risk management, if it's possible for you to, to really understand it, um, yeah. For this advanced technology to have advanced itself to this degree, to real-time communication, there were issues involving sexual assault where women were raped. Is there a way we can actually end this type of charade where I'm not schizophrenic anymore? This is real information.
I am not a medical professional. I cannot.
Still, risk management would indicate that with the lithium ions and stuff like that and all those batteries, that because that advanced technology advanced itself, there was problems, right? And because that happened, there were problems where people blew up, cars blew up, every, the world ended, everything like that, right? Now, for this type of Neuralink roofie to be involved with children all the way up to adults, and for this to have been indicated in enforcement, and for that to be the case, why can't we actually address that as a constituents body, that Neuralinks are real and that does pose a harm to the community? Um, to, for have that, excuse me.
Sorry about that. Gentlemen, close the door, please.
So time and time again, I'm interrupted, at least to some degree, not necessarily on social media where I'm shadow banned or denied some sense of access to community members like Emily Jabor, who I'm, will be voting for. Not necessarily, I haven't seen Russo really speak that much on the issue of anything, but if I can get through to anyone, I would get through to the women, especially in education. The Board of Education would do better explaining this very quickly. Fingers, numbers, and magnets. The magnets being these Neuralinks inside people, which cause real-time communication, which is plagiarism, that if in the event you cannot do your homework without a Neuralink, or you got this figure-it-out tech, where you know what I'm doing in my spare time, so by the time I walk into this city hall meeting, you already know everything about me, or vice versa, like, like, you know, it doesn't even matter. Who is the enemy here, this technology? Risk management would indicate that even if it is a lithium ion battery or a Neuralink roofie in the minds of every human on planet Earth, to any type of extent, if this technology was black, uh, or dark net tech, we can address it now. I've exposed it to the degree where not a single person can actually do anything about it. This is something that's been destroyed by me. I've already destroyed it completely. Frankly, I've robbed people in broad daylight who are so illegal that can't come forward, that I'm pretty much contained to legal vigilantism, like how I robbed illegal storefronts that had illegal cannabis from illegal immigrants whose stores would lock me in, then where I'll bring a Captain America shield and beat them up, steal their stuff. I could say that in front of this cop, and I did it legally. I'd call it legal laundering. Trickle up economics, if you will. I stole from illegal activity and gave to legal activity. And to the degree that I've done it, to the degree where illegal cannabis does not like me, I am supported by legal cannabis dispensaries that can now breathe a little easier, knowing that illegal activity does not enforce these types of, these types of, in, you know, anything. And now with the communication factor being destroyed, illegal activity further is disgraced. With them not being able to snitch, my legal vigilantism as a citizen of the United States is contained. Where not only am I frankly robbing them in broad daylight, where I can say that in front of a police officer, which it is technically a crime, but wouldn't you say that an illegal immigrant holding an illegal storefront with illegal cannabis would be more illegal than me walking in there and taking all your crap, right? Wouldn't you agree? That would be to some degree an hilarious gesture. Spider-Man move right there. Like, that's something cool. Like, uh, Batman would love me, man, because I can literally do that and literally look innocent until proven guilty in a court of law, where if I can be just, who would be more inclined to show up to a legal federally owned building with federal protections of all your citizens than me doing that over an illegal immigrant doing that? I actually am okay with federal protections being removed from immigrants. I do not support any type of immigration in our modern grid systems that involve illegal activity, like illegal storefronts, like illegal rape or murder using Neuralink roofies. And if in the event anything has been done, I am the one who set the platform. You guys can speak freely on it. This Neuralink roofie will no longer be available for anyone, and if you do use this technology, please remove it. Refund it. I can hear you in real time. I stole it completely. This new technology, I have it in my possession and I could hear people whenever I turn it on. Very simple. I caught everybody. Fingers, numbers, and magnets. People, very simple. They run on numbered systems, which is modern grid systems. All of the United States does it, maybe even the whole planet, but I want to focus on this country. I hope that we can follow suit and brutally end this once and for all. Thank you.
Jesus. Wow.
Thank you very much.
I was wondering what was gonna happen when it comes on.
George Weinberger. Hello?
Sorry. Okay, now we got it.
Hello. Uh, hi, I'm George. Uh, happy to be a Hoboken resident for almost five years now.
Closer.
Um, I, sorry?
Closer than mine.
We can hear better when you're.
I'm a teacher. I have a loud voice. I'm good. Um, so I have, uh, twins in kindergarten, and I know that three years ago, over three years ago already, June 25th, 2020, sorry, January 25th, 2022, there was a referendum to vote for the new high school to be built, I believe on the football field that we have in Hoboken. Um, I just want to take a temperature check, uh, and see, has there been any progress speaking with Hoboken schools and the council and the City of Hoboken about any plan, uh, to either build a new building or to find, uh, how students may move from the middle school, um, to the high school, and what is the future of that? Because we have many students and families moving to Hoboken. Uh, we know that the numbers will increase, so I want to make sure, um, and encourage the City of Hoboken to keep that dialogue open. Um, two other things I have off the agenda are, um, summertime sprinklers. Everyone's talking about summer camp. I'm also thinking about summertime sprinklers, um, with my six-year-old twins. Um, sometimes we'll start our day before the wee-haw and pool, since I'm a teacher and I have the summers with them. Uh, sometimes we'll start going to a park. And very often in Hoboken, uh, the sprinklers are on in the morning, but there are mornings when there might be some bit of a delay. I don't know if, uh, someone who is turning on the sprinklers, if there are rounds that start uptown or downtown. Would the council consider, uh, something that many people in the community talk about, where Jackson Park on Second and Jackson, uh, is a wonderful park. It has the exposed brick. It's already shady in the summer when the trees have the leaves again. Um, that's where people sort of, uh, come to hang out on a very hot day. Could that sprinkler be turned on around even 8:00 AM? Um, I have very early risers. I, I know many kindergartners, first graders in our student community and my twins' friends who, they're up at 5:30 or 6:00 AM, so saying 9:00 AM sprinkler is very late in the day. Um, so something even like that would help a lot of families. Again, many congregate in Jackson Park to hang out in that part of the day, knowing that it's going to get hotter in the day. Um, so is that something that the council could consider? Um, 8:00 AM sprinkler to turn on at Jackson, I think a lot of Hoboken parents would be very happy that way. Um, a third thing, um, is the PATH train station. Um, I am a teacher in Astoria, so I do get up very early and I get to Astoria by 7:00 AM, for a meeting most days at 7:00 AM in my school. Um, and I've been successful getting to work. That's been fine. I've been able to maneuver. I know some people might not be able to use the light rail or, um, other modes of transportation to sort of fix their commutes, uh, if they do leave Hoboken, oh, excuse me, Hoboken during the day. Um, but I would like to know, is the council aware, unfortunately, of any delay that might be occurring? Uh, it is supposed to be finished, the station renovations, February 25th. I'm usually an optimist, but I don't know if there might be something someone would like to share here, if they know about a potential delay. Um, also, the viola situation, has that somehow put a delay, uh, to the reopening of the PATH station in Hoboken? So those are my three things. It's Hoboken schools continuing to build, it's sprinkler, Jackson Park, 8:00 AM for the summer. Um, and also the, uh, PATH train, is it really opening February 25th, or do we have to wait a little longer? Thank you.
Yeah, thank, I mean, you could sit down. We, we don't usually do a back and forth, but I mean, as a teacher, you may very well be aware that we don't get a vote on the school, whether there'll be a new school. We all, I'm sure, have opinions in that regard, but, um, I would go to the school board meeting and ask them that question. Um, and.
I can answer two of the other ones, yeah.
I was gonna say about the PATH.
The HBOE is going through a long-range facility plan right now, so that will be, give a little bit more clarity on that. So some of the meetings there. As far as Second and Jackson, um, headed the rec parks and direct, I can speak to somebody to find out. Again, turning things on and off and opening gates sometimes are difficult because some of our employees are, might be pulled somewhere else, but I can look into that for you. If, if you, if I could exchange numbers with you, um, we can work on that. And, um, I spoke with somebody from, I spoke with somebody today. How's this on the PATH? Uh, it's unofficial, but they, 25th still looks like it's, it's a go. Uh, remember, when they give a timeline, it's to actually open it back up. It's not saying that you're going to have everything, like when we finish, when you go to your house and it's all finished. There may be still, still some things they have to do. But from what I understand, they're actually, it's, it's looking good. Uh, and I think I want to reiterate that I, it proves that we can fix things in the transit system because they've done a great job, I think, with the, Jesus.
That's it, you're done, Paul. Thanks for, thanks for coming.
Done with the buses on the Washington Street. I like that.
This is handy. Um, Council President, I was just gonna add, I think there was a social media post floating around today about delays. So I actually checked with the administration who checked with NJ Transit. So there's a difference between potential delays with respect to some of the larger environmental pieces of this project. The opening, the reopening on February 25th is firm. It is very firm, and that is because all eyes are on that date. And they know it. There may be some additional smaller projects, particularly if they're more cosmetic in nature, that don't require a full closure to do them. So when people return to the PATH on February 25th, there may be some work continuing, but we have been very clear, and the administration confirms that all of the major construction that, that required this closure will be resolved to be on time. So.
Yeah, the staircases have been closed for months, you know, one of the two and so forth. So, um, so I think Michael, uh, Michelle spoke earlier, Dini Ajmani.
Thank you.
Um, I was gonna comment. You have to come up to the mic all the way. Otherwise, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Excellent. Excellent. Um, I was gonna comment on Garage B, which got carried, but can I still talk about it?
You can say anything you want.
Excellent. Um, so I've spoken at the community meetings as well. Um, I feel like I should point out that of, building affordable housing is very different than keeping housing affordable. And my worry with this project is that in an effort to build affordable housing, we're gonna make Hoboken less affordable for those who live here. Um, and that's because rents are going to be capped from what I understand the, the, the proposal is, um, which means that there will be tax breaks involved. And when you give tax breaks to one entity, just means that you're raising taxes for the rest. Um, our tax rate has already gone up significantly, as you pointed out, Councilwoman, a little bit earlier. Um, I think the, the goal to build more affordable housing is laudable. However, um, it is important to know where are we going. These projects tend to seem very ad hoc, um, and project by project. It would be lovely to see if there is a plan city has and a number of unit target city has for how many units it wants to build for affordable housing. State just put out a report, um, from Department of Consumer Affairs for 10-year target for all the cities, and it says that Hoboken's present need is 126 units. I'm wondering if that's the target city has in mind, um, because as you think about, uh, where you will be going in your vote on this particular project, just keep in mind that the decision you make also affects people who are already living here, not just the people who would want to come and live here. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Uh, Mark Willis, I. Kevin Davis. You're sauntering this evening.
I was excited to see in my email inbox an Oprah response, because boy, do I love filing those Oprah requests. And especially I got really excited because it was on one of my favorite topics, the Kimley Horn Parking Reduction Study, or as the city calls it, the curbside management study. So I opened it, PDF, 76 pages, I'm ready to go. And then I remembered, oh, shoot, I made a big mistake. I forgot to ask, I requested all the emails between the city and the Kimley Horn consultants, but I forgot to ask for all attachments to those emails. And usually the attachment says the smoking gun. So I didn't get the attachment, so I read through it. And then there was an email from November 15th from Robert Farren, the project manager for Kimley Horn, uh, of the parking study to the city, and he was talking about an attached spreadsheet with 37 recommendations in five policy areas for the Kimley Horn plan. And you think, oh, November 15th, that was before they came in December with their tin cup asking for more money because they ran out of money for the original study. And that, that first vote, you guys tabled it, you met with them, and sadly, only two of you guys held firm and said, no more money. And you, you guys could have said, you know what? How about before we give you more money, you tell us what those draft recommendations are, all 37 of them. And today is February, three months later, since that email, we have no idea what they're discussing uh, for their parking study. Now, I started thinking through all this, and I was like, you know, this seems familiar. They're gonna have a public meeting and they're not gonna tell the public ahead of time what these recommendations are. And then no one's gonna show up at the public meeting, and by the time it's on the, the table for anyone to try and stop it, it's gonna be too late. And that kind of reminded me of the 2022 high school referendum where the, the school board was proposing, um, a $240 million high school, which would have been $300 million with interest. Uh, would have had a rooftop football field, ice hockey rink, would have raised school taxes 20%. And supposedly, no one on the council knew about it, even though I found it from another Oprah request, that at least 40 city employees knew about it in early October, that there was going to be a referendum on the high school. And then this reminded me of an interview a council member gave during the referendum process with John Highness. And so I don't get cues of misinformation. Let me just read the quote that came out of it. Oh, this is so good. Seeing all the back and forth and being at Board of Ed meetings this week, it's very obvious this is a widely debated issue right now for the residents of Hoboken. It makes me shudder to think about how this would have gone if we'd given people a longer runway in terms of allowing this to go on. It's similar, unfortunately, to a political election. How cute! Like, you're scared of giving people a longer runway? Is that what the city's afraid of, giving us a longer runway to comment on what Kimley Horn's gonna recommend? I have no idea what's gonna come out of their mouths. Are they gonna say, let's increase parking rates? Let's have more Parklets? Uh, let's bring back the electric, the e-scooter program? I have no idea, because, you know, I did a follow-up Oprah request for all the attachments to the emails with attachments. Haven't heard back. I don't expect to by the time they have a meeting, but I, I'm willing to make a wager. If I do hear back before their public meeting with the spreadsheet of the recommendations, then I'll spend one hour on Washington Street on the first 60-degree day weather of this year in a banana costume biking up and down Washington Street. And if the city loses this challenge and I don't get the spreadsheet, then I'll just go bananas about this study.
Thank you very much. Uh, Alex Garcia is no longer in the room. Uh, Terry Prances.
I think it's a bad choice.
Good evening, uh, council members and members of the public who may be watching. Uh, I'm here to talk about Garage B. It was on the agenda. It's been moved, uh, for two weeks, but there's still a number of questions. And no, I have not read the updated, um, edits that have been done, and I'm not sure anyone in the public has. Uh, so I'm gonna highlight some issues because I think it's been under-publicized, and that's the main reason I'm here tonight, whether or not there had been a vote. So it has not been publicized, uh, the meeting, uh, one was Zoom, the other was in-person. The in-person meeting, the notice went out, the, the headlined notice, as opposed to being buried as a fourth or fifth item, went out the afternoon of the day of the meeting. Um, so at that meeting, there was a long, uh, there was a long gap in, in what the public knew and why the public might be concerned about this. Many of us are concerned about the height. The height, there was a whole page setup, uh, in both nixls about the, the project, but in neither one was the height, the 250 feet highlighted. So that's roughly 25 stories. Uh, the words 25 stories or thereabouts were not found, at least in all the initial paperwork. stories or thereabouts were not found, at least in all the initial paperwork, and you really had to do your own calculation to get there. So, you also had to look quite carefully to realize that it's, it's a border-to-border takeover of roughly 60% of a block, so it has no green space allocated, there is, there's a roadway, but the roadway is already there, there's no setbacks indicated, or stepbacks, there's no dog run, and it infers there's a removal of public art before, a major piece of public art, before its five years of life. The, the fact of the matter is, Hoboken is already, if you look at overall density, and the issues this kind of new added residential density will add, we're already the fourth most populous city on a population per square mile basis, and considerably above New York City itself, so we weigh in at 48,000 per square mile, the city has 29,000 per square mile. The Clossian Heights around this project, on the block, it is, as a garage, roughly five to six stories, it is the tallest building, so we're talking about taking something and quadrupling the height, and it's already the tallest building on the block. Everything else on that block is one to five stories, on the adjacent block south, where you're getting the historic commercial area, also, one to five stories in height, you look at the corporate center even, to the east, which has the advantage of sitting on the waterfront, it's only two-thirds the height of this proposed 25 stories, and then the Hudson Square buildings weigh in at about 12 to 13 stories, and they're the immediate block north of this, so it is really not fitting, it totally towers over all of that, let alone Washington Street, which would be only one block away. The 80%, which we should understand better, that are going into this advantaged workforce housing, that really needs to be better explained, because the, the numbers that came up that were unconfirmed, despite the questions the administration about the range of incomes being discussed, 84 to 120 was put on the table in the in-person meeting, this is really middle-class, so when you look at this, and think of all the people who are in that income range, paying full rent, market rent, paying taxes already, and yet, a limited number will wind up in this building, and other questions about, do they have to work in Hoboken? Not answered. Do they have to be in the municipal force? Not answered. Do they have to be teachers? Not answered. So what are the, what are all the restrictions, and what happens if their job changes, their income changes, et cetera? I'm glad it's not moving forward tonight, but it's not moving forward for the wrong reason, it's not moving forward because it sounds like of technicalities, but I really urge you to look very closely at this resolution in round one and round two, share information on this workforce allocation, I know there's a 20% allocation for affordable housing, that, as mentioned earlier, is admirable, but the harsh reality is, we've been too successful on that, so the city now has 21,000 people on the affordable housing waiting list, we only have 27,000 households in the city.
Could you finish up, Terry?
So, it's too big, it's wrong for this space, please think harder about this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Nobody else signed up for the public portion?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the meeting?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. This Phil?
Good night, everybody.